Por favor, rogamos a las delegaciones acercarse a sus lugares para que iniciemos nuestra sesión esta mañana. Buenos días a todas y todos, señor presidente. Con veintiséis delegaciones, veintisiete delegaciones en el salón Simón Bolívar contamos con el quorum necesario. Gracias, presidente.
Muchas gracias, muy buenos días. Les agradezco la presencia en este día tan frío que nos ha tocado hoy. Y tras la verificación del quorum por parte de la secretaría, tengo el honor de declarar abierta nuestra primera sesión ordinaria de este Consejo Permanente para el año 2024. Aprovecho para expresarles a todos mis deseos de felicidad y prosperidad en este año que recién está comenzando. Esta es la primera sesión que hacemos bajo la presidencia de Argentina, es un gran honor para nosotros. Si las matemáticas no me fallan, es una circunstancia que a cada uno de los países integrantes de la asociación nos toca cada ocho años. Así que es un gran honor y un gran compromiso tener esta responsabilidad en este trimestre. Es la intención de la Argentina presentar un plan de trabajo, una propuesta, algunos lineamientos que puedan servir para desarrollar determinadas actividades. Estamos aún en consultas con nuestras autoridades, pero puedo anunciar que lo vamos a presentar muy próximamente para que lo tengan a disposición, sin dudas antes de la próxima sesión ordinaria del Consejo, que está prevista para fines de mes, para el día 31, si no me equivoco. Sí les puedo adelantar que la intención es que ese plan de trabajo gire en torno a dos ejes principalmente, que son el fortalecimiento de la democracia y la promoción del desarrollo integral. Todo esto atravesado por el resguardo y el compromiso de observancia de las libertades individuales y fundamentales. También tenemos la intención de tratar en algún momento del trimestre la cuestión de los desastres naturales y la gestión para la prevención de los riesgos que estos desastres naturales implican. Por supuesto que observaremos las conmemoraciones que corresponde, que caen en el calendario del primer trimestre. Y la intención de mi parte, y así haré todos los esfuerzos posibles junto a los colegas de la representación, es impulsar nuestros trabajos bajo el precepto de la cooperación y el consenso. Logrando así alcanzar documentos, ya sean declaraciones, resoluciones, o lo que se trate, que a mi juicio tiene mucho más fuerza si son optados bajo esta modalidad en vez de hacerlo por mayoría. Bueno, muchas gracias por haberme prestado su atención a estos adelantos. En otro orden de ideas, quiero expresar nuestras más sentidas condolencias a la delegación de Trinidad y Tobago, así como al gobierno y pueblo de dicho estado miembro por la sensible pérdida del ex primer ministro Basdeo Panday el primero de enero, hace unos días. Solicitamos respetuosamente la delegación de Trinidad y Tobago que haga llegar nuestras condolencias a los seres queridos del ex primer ministro. Asimismo, compartimos nuestro sentido pésame con la delegación de Antigua y Barbuda, así como con el gobierno y pueblo de dicho estado miembro por la pérdida del doctor Patrick Lewis el pasado cinco de enero. El doctor Lewis, quien desempeñó el cargo de embajador de Antigua y Barbuda ante Estados Unidos y la organización de los Estados Americanos tendrá un merecido reconocimiento más adelante en esta sesión. Sin perjuicio de ello, en un acto de respeto los invito a que nos pongamos de pie para observar un momento de silencio en honor y en memoria de estas dos personalidades. Muchas gracias. En otro orden de cosas, es un honor expresar mis felicitaciones al pueblo y gobierno de Haití con motivo de la conmemoración de su fiesta nacional el pasado primero de enero. Igualmente, extiendo nuestras felicitaciones y deseos de éxito a la delegación de Guatemala por la asunción del nuevo gobierno encabezado por el presidente Bernardo Arévalo y la vicepresidenta Karine Herrera. Estimados colegas, antes de proceder a la aprobación del orden del día corresponde hacer entrega en nombre del Consejo Permanente del mallete conmemorativo a nuestro colega y decano, al embajador Sir Ronald Sanders, representante permanente de Antigua y Barbuda, quien durante el último trimestre y por tercera ocasión presidió este Consejo Permanente en un periodo especialmente complejo, durante el cual se abordaron asuntos significativos para afrontar retos que atañen a los estados miembros y a esta organización en su conjunto. El embajador Sanders ejerció su presidencia con inteligencia, aplomo, compromiso y eficacia, todas virtudes que lo caracterizan. Así que embajador, reciba este mallete, en Argentina lo llaman martillo, pero bueno... Este mallete como símbolo de nuestra gratitud por su encomiable gestión al frente del Consejo Permanente. Invito al embajador Sanders a la mesa para recibirlo. Muchas gracias nuevamente por su esfuerzo, dedicación y compromiso con esta organización, embajador. Pasamos al punto entonces, aprobación del orden del día. De conformidad con lo respuesto en el artículo 43 del reglamento, someto a consideración el proyecto de orden del día contenido en el documento CP/OD 2480/24. No hay observaciones. Lo damos por aprobado entonces, muchas gracias. Podemos pasar al siguiente punto, informe final de la misión de observación electoral de la OEA desplegada para las elecciones generales del 16 de septiembre de 2021 en las Bahamas. El siguiente punto es la presentación del informe final de la misión de observación electoral de la OEA desplegada para las elecciones generales en Bahamas, atendiendo la solicitud del secretario general, contenida en el documento CP/INF El jefe de misión, el distinguido embajador Denis Antoine, presentará un resumen del informe, el cual fue distribuido a las delegaciones como documento CP DOC 5958/24. Antes de proceder a ofrecer la palabra al embajador Antoine, permítame reconocer y saludar la presencia en esta sala del excelentísimo señor Frederick Mitchell, ministro de Relaciones Exteriores del Commonwealth de las Bahamas. Señor ministro, bienvenido al Consejo Permanente de la OEA. Embajador Antoine, tiene usted la palabra.
Ambassador Daniel Raimundi, Chair of the Permanent Council. Honorable Frederick Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs and the Public Service of the Bahamas. Ambassador Chet Nehmoh, Permanent Representative of the Bahamas to the OAS. Ambassador Nestor Mendez, OAS Assistant Secretary General. Representatives of the OAS Member States and Permanent Observers. The OAS Electoral Observation Mission for the September 16th, 2021 general elections in the Bahamas congratulates citizens and authorities on the successful conduct of the 2021 electoral process despite the challenges of the COVID-19 death. On Thursday, September 9th, 2021, prior to the deployment, members of the mission observed the conduct of the overseas poll at the consulate of the Bahamas in Washington DC. On election day, September 16th, members of the mission were present in thirty-two of the Bahamas's thirty-nine constituencies and observe the process from the opening of polling stations to the tallying and transmission of preliminary results. While the mission was informed of some challenges with the advance polling in the Bahamas on September 9th, such as long lines or uncertainty among some voters about where to vote, the requirements of voting in advance, and an uneven application of established procedures at the close of the polls. However, in general, the overall process was well organized. Preliminary results began to arrive at the Parliamentary Registration Department shortly after 6:30 PM on election night. Shortly after 9 PM, as the results continued to be received and relayed to the general public through the media, Prime Minister Herbert Minnis, political leader of the Free National Movement, considered the election. His concession was accepted by the political leader of the Progressive Liberal Party, Mr. Philip Brave Davis. The mission welcomed this clear sign of the strength of the Bahamian democracy. On the day after the election, September 17th, members of the mission observed the process of tabulating, disseminating of the final results. These confirmed that the Progressive Liberal Party had won the election, taking thirty-two of the thirty-nine seats in the House of Assembly, with the remaining seven seats going to the Free National Movement. The OAS commends the electoral authorities and all poll workers for their hard work in organizing and executing the 2021 electoral process. OAS missions are deployed to support efforts by member states to improve their electoral systems. In the time that remains, allow me to briefly mention a few of the mission's findings and recommendations. The mission's complete report has been distributed and can be found on the webpage of the OAS Department of Electoral Cooperation and Observation. Electoral system. The 2017 OAS mission had commended the steps taken in the Bahamas to provide access to the vote to eligible citizens who live abroad, who met the stated criteria to vote early in the Bahamas. The expansion of access to advanced poll additional categories of eligible citizens, including persons over the age of sixty-five years, was commendable setting in support of the ineligible human rights of all persons to participate in the country's democratic process. This is a credible, commendable example of enhanced voting rights in the Caribbean. The OAS recommended in the past that countries that do not have an overseas component of their voting process explore options for access to the vote by their citizens overseas. The Bahamas offers a good example in this regard. While there were some issues in the conduct of the 2021 advanced poll, as earlier mentioned, and as occurred in 2017, the mission encourages the authorities to continue their work to identify, analyze, and resolve these challenges and to strengthen these two important categories of voting in the Bahamas. Voter ID cards. The continued use of voters' ID cards with technical deficiencies remained a source of concern in the 2021 polls, particularly lack of security features to prevent improper use of these voter cards, which are prepared and issued in a largely manual fashion. The mission therefore recommends modernizing electoral processes in the Bahamas by continuing to digitize registration procedures and moving towards use of biometric voter ID cards as recommended by the 2017 OAS mission and as stipulated in the Parliamentary Elections Amendment Act. These steps will support the efforts of the authorities to improve efficiency and security in elections and reduce the level of human error while deterring efforts at forgery and fraudulent alterations. Political finance. Lack of campaign finance reporting requirements for candidates and political parties in the Bahamas, along with the absence of authority with supervisory enforcement functions in this regard, results in an accountability deficiency in the country's electoral system. A lack of transparency measures and mechanisms regarding the disclosure of campaign contributions and spending also has a negative impact on the ability of voters to make informed decisions. The mission recommends creating legal standards and practices for recording, managing, and reporting political party and candidate contributions and expenditures, establishing a political finance oversight authority to administer the established standards and enforce penalty for non-compliance, prohibiting anonymous donations and contributions from foreign sources, and considering the establishment of expenditure limits for election campaigns. Political participation of women. The political equality of women strengthens the quality of democracy. In the Bahamas, sociocultural systemic political barriers continue to limit women's political advancement, particularly as elected officials, ministers of government, and leaders of political parties. There were some improvement in the 2021 poll. For example, seven women were elected to office out of the total of thirty-nine seats, an increase from the 2017 when five women were elected. Of the... Excuse me. Of the seven women elected in 2021, five were appointed to the twenty-two-member cabinet in comparison with the single female minister appointed in 2019 cabinet prior to elections. However, women continue to face challenges acquiring party support and financing for campaigns, along with unequal access to parties' decision-making structures and unequal access to traditional media coverage. In order to ensure women's equal representation in decision-making positions, the OAS mission recommends implementing an effective gender quota mechanism in order to progressively adopt parity measures that level the playing field for women in elections, providing targeted financial support to promote the political participation of women with resources directed toward financing training initiatives, mentorship programs, and campaign by women candidates. The Parliamentary Registration Department appropriate state authorities, political parties, civil society organizations, and other relevant stakeholders should also collaborate to develop training opportunities, mentorship programs, and other initiatives to promote women's participation and leadership in politics. Acknowledgement. The mission thanks the government of the Bahamas and the Parliamentary Registration Department, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, the stakeholders with whom it met, and all citizens for their willingness to engage and to... on the different aspects of electoral process. These discussions were of tremendous value to the mission in the conduct of its work. Our particular thanks to the honorable minister for traveling to Washington DC to receive this report for the Bahamas's unwavering commitment to strengthen democracy and its own democratic process. The mission is also grateful to the government of the Dominican Republic, Italy, Korea, Mexico, the Netherlands, and the United States for the financial contributions which made this mission possible. I thank you.
Muchas gracias, embajador, por su informe sobre el desarrollo de la observación electoral de la OEA en su país y el impacto positivo que la misma tuvo en el desarrollo general del proceso. A continuación, ofrezco la palabra al excelentísimo señor Frederick Mitchell, ministro de Relaciones Exteriores del Commonwealth de las Bahamas. Señor ministro, usted tiene la palabra, por favor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Assistant Secretary General, Ambassador Antoine. Excellencies all, ladies and gentlemen, and some old friends. It's an honor to join you this morning on behalf of the government and people of the Bahamas to respond to this report on the OAS Electoral Observation Mission deployed to monitor the Bahamas elections in 2021. The third such mission for the Bahamas. I thank you, Ambassador Antoine, and your team. So, at the outset, I wish to extend appreciation on behalf of the honorable Prime Minister Philip Davis to the OAS Department of Electoral Cooperation and Observation, and particularly Ambassador Antoine and the remainder of the 2021 team, which was comprised of eighteen experts from across nine countries for your commendable work at such an exacting time globally for the Bahamas. And I also wish to join with Ambassador Antoine in thanking the governments of the Dominican Republic, Italy, Korea, Mexico, the Netherlands, and the United States that donated to make the Observation Mission possible. Although some of us may rightly wish to forget the context of 2021, the COVID-19 pandemic and its knock-on effects created a challenging environment in which all of our governments had to operate. Beyond the usual challenges of executing elections across an archipelago of far-flung islands and the fact that our 2021 elections were snap elections, meaning that there was little formal notice before the elections were called, of paramount importance at the time was the need to ensure that the elections could be carried out in a manner that was safe and which mitigated the risk of exacerbating the pandemic. Combined, these challenges created extraordinary circumstances under which to execute an election. And notwithstanding the opportunities identified in the report for improving the electoral process, we believe these challenges were commendably handled by our Parliamentary Registration Department, which is an independent, nonpartisan, neutral statutory body tasked with electoral management in collaboration with health and national security authorities. We note and are appreciative of the report's affirmation that the electoral authorities of the Bahamas successfully organized and executed a process that presented significant logistical and political challenges, and candidates and political leaders, and most importantly, the citizens of the Bahamas, showed their commitment in further strengthening democracy in the country by exercising their right to vote during the pandemic. While the sixty-five percent voter turnout for the 2021 elections was understandably well below the usual turnout for Bahamian elections, we're usually up around the upper eighties or lower nineties. Bahamians across the archipelago elected to participate in the democratic process in significant numbers to elect thirty-nine political representatives, and the transfer of political power to a new administration was carried out peacefully. The Bahamas is also pleased to be a hemispheric leader in the facilitation of advanced voting for public servants and vulnerable populations like the elderly and overseas voting for Bahamian students and public servants posted abroad. We believe that as far as practicable, voting should be a comfortable process for all Bahamians, and access to the vote should be afforded to Bahamians that are ordinarily resident in the Bahamas, even if they are temporarily abroad. We see our policies around advanced and overseas voting as best-practice models that we would welcome sharing with others in this region. So the Bahamas also welcomes the electoral recommendations in the report and reiterates its commitment to continue working to implement electoral best practices and modernize our democratic processes. Alongside advising broadly on the modernization reforms to be carried out by our Parliamentary Registration Department, I will also be responding to the report's recommendations on boundaries, voter registration, electoral technology, electoral justice, campaign finance reform, and the women's electoral participation. The Bahamas will continue to prioritize efforts toward facilitating greater accessibility to polling places, keeping in mind vulnerable populations such as the elderly and the disabled within the country. As outlined in the report... As outlined in the report, changes to include access to voter information at polling places and the addition of polling place concierges to guide voters and assist with the voting process for electors over the age of sixty-five and those with disabilities were implemented on Election Day in 2021, and we will continue to explore policies to improve the elections' process. A part of the modernization process that we are pursuing includes the Parliamentary Registration Department's new strategic plan, which proposes a revised organizational structure, strengthening of communications staffing, and inclusion of voter educational materials on the department's website. The department has also developed materials to inform school curricula to ensure our youth are informed about their democratic process and are primed for political participation. In order to ensure that we have a consistent and quality supply of election workers, the Parliamentary Registration Department is in the process of identifying a cadre of persons who would be suitable to serve as returning officers, presiding officers, and polling clerks, and its restructuring plans call for comprehensive training of these categories of persons, of workers, with refreshers being given at intervals. Additionally, candidates will be provided with information for the training of their respective poll workers. In order to ensure that there are systems in place for timely communication of election results to the public, our Parliamentary Registration Department has an established relationship with government's Communications Arm, which is the Bahamas Information Services, which provides dissemination of results and related news. Prior to the 2021 election, the Parliamentary Elections Amendment Act of 2020 transitioned the Bahamas away from requiring full reregistration of voters before every election to adopting a continuous register process based on the prior election's voter rolls. It's noted that in the context of the 2021 snap election, there was regrettably limited time for registration of any citizens who may have become new voters after 2017. It should also be noted that the registration process in the Bahamas is ongoing, even before the adoption of the continuous register. Both the Parliamentary Registration Department and political stakeholders have always encouraged eligible persons to register whenever they are able to vote because the fact that an election could be called at any time, that exists, and the department has always made it possible for registrations to be carried out in what may be termed as off-seasons. The government is exploring ways to ensure the register is a most accurate reflection of those eligible to vote. Consequently, those persons who've died and those who are serving sentences will be routinely cleansed from the registration list, and revisions and amendments to the register are to be published in an addendum on a quarterly basis and incorporated into the register of voters. The Bahamas is also examining ways to leverage electoral technology to ensure more secure and efficient elections, and a higher degree of accuracy in terms of identification of voters, and minimizing the opportunity for fraud or impersonation. So, in its present form, the Parliamentary Elections Act makes the use of biometric voters' cards an option. However, with proposed legislative enhancements to the act, the use of biometric cards should become mandatory. The government of the Bahamas will be aiming to institute a fully digitized identification process by the next Bahamian general election, and we look forward to move forward. We would welcome technical cooperation on information storage and citizen education as it relates to the use of electronic voter identification, as we would appreciate in particular the assistance of OAS in moving this aspect of the project forward. Now, the report's concerns regarding lack of uniformity in the numbers across constituencies, we took note of that. But what's important to highlight, however, is that while the objective is for constituencies to contain the same number of voters as is reasonably practicable, Article seventy of the Bahamian Constitution highlights additional relevant special considerations such as the needs of sparsely populated areas, the practicability of elected members maintaining contact with electors in such areas as size, physical features, national boundaries, natural boundaries, and geographical isolation. These special considerations reflect the realities of governance in a far-flung archipelago and explain the variability in size between some constituencies, particularly those in more sparsely populated islands in the central and southern Bahamas. So, it's possible for a constituency in your province to have, on average, six thousand or five thousand per person, but a constituency like Macau has a total of about fifteen hundred. But they have four islands remote to the south and dispersed with very small populations. So, in order for the electors to have contact with a representative, those small numbers obtain. With respect to access to electoral justice, there was a reference in the report to the case of Glenroy, Bethel, and Dexter Edwards against the Parliamentary Registration Department and the Ministry of National Security, where an election injunction was sought due to the late release of the voter registry and concerns around the impact of voter registration because of the snap election. Now, it's important to note that in this specific instance, there does not seem to have been a formal request by the litigant for a hearing date with the courts. So, it works like this. What we found is, when we examined the file, that an action was actually filed, there was a supporting affidavit, but the litigant has a responsibility to move the process forward, and that's done by writing the registrar and indicating, "This is an emergency, and we need to have a date set down." We didn't find any evidence in the file that the litigant himself, I think it's himself, actually moved the process beyond simply filing the documents. We're still looking at the file, but that's the evidence which we've uncovered so far. But notwithstanding that, in this particular case, when we were in opposition, we faced a similar experience with respect to access to the courts, and so we identify with the criticism because there was a state of emergency or the equivalent during the pandemic. We sought to challenge the legality of it, but could not get a hearing in a timely fashion. So, that is, we brought this particular observation before the now Chief Justice, and he's agreed to have a look at it to see about this issue of access to the courts because we think that that's an important observation. As outlined in the administration's Blueprint for Change: Election Manifesto, the government is committed to campaign finance reform, and work is ongoing on the development of a legal framework to govern campaign finance. We further note the report's recommendations with respect to enhancing women's electoral participation. And while we're pleased that one-third of the candidates vying in the 2021 election were women, we know that work remains on ensuring more equitable electoral outcomes for women, and the administration remains committed to gender equality and empowerment of women and girls in the Bahamas. So, in conclusion, Mr. President, one week ago, Bahamians celebrated Majority Rule Day, which we consider our most important day in the history of the Bahamas after emancipation in eighteen thirty-four, and then Independence Day in nineteen seventy-three. For any democracy to be effective and sustainable, the will of the majority must carry the day, and all citizens must feel included in and trust the electoral process. While the Bahamas has had one of the oldest continuing parliaments in the world, it's only been within the past two generations that our country has seen the kind of political and socioeconomic transformations that have allowed all Bahamians the opportunity and an ownership stake in their country. This transformative journey to transition away from the old colonial Bahamas to a new Bahamas with constitutional and political rights for all Bahamians was sparked by a vibrant labor movement in the nineteen forties and fifties, who insisted on greater access to opportunity and equal pay for equal work regardless of race or nationality. During the early sixties, the women's suffrage movement continued the work on making a new Bahamas through demanding and attaining equal political rights for women. Women obtained the right to vote in nineteen sixty-two. Later on in the nineteen sixties, there's a day we call Black Tuesday, the father of the country, Sir Lyndon Pinling, whose bust is in this hall, channeling the growing frustrations of the Bahamian people through the parliamentary mace out of the window in parliament in recognition of the ideal that political power in the Bahamas should flow from and reside with the people. It is from this burgeoning desire by the black majority for equality, freedom, and opportunity that my party, the Progressive Liberal Party, was forged in nineteen fifty-three, and that majority rule was finally attained in nineteen sixty-seven, and national independence in nineteen seventy-three. And today, the Bahamas celebrates fifty years of sovereignty and the continuing work of building a more racially, socially, politically, and economically equitable Bahamian society. Here in the U.S., this great odyssey is often characterized as the work towards building a more perfect union, but it is a pilgrimage that all of our countries, big and small, developed and developing, are on because democracy is not something that is static or that is immune to regression. It is both a precious and fragile thing. It is something that we, as its caretakers, must continue to nurture and defend, day by day. Among the hallmarks that differentiate the Americas from some other regions of the world, and certainly that characterize the ethos of OAS member states, is our broad commitment as sovereign countries to uphold democratic norms in governance as envisaged by the OAS Charter and the Inter-American Democratic Charter. Upholding our shared democratic norms today requires even greater resolve, given the extent to which democracy has been under fire across the hemisphere and globally, with the rise of authoritarianism and toxic nationalism, and the emerging proclivity for use of violence to influence electoral outcomes. The persistent deluge of misinformation injected into political discourse, often deliberately spread by malign actors, and the creeping distrust in institutions and retrenchment from democratic engagement that has particularly captured younger voters. That's why the work of the OAS Secretariat for Strengthening Democracy does, including Electoral Observation Missions, what they do is so essential. The OAS serves as an invaluable partner, supporting member states with the daily work of sustaining and bolstering liberal democracy. In the grand sweep of history, the Bahamas is a relatively new but proud full democracy. Nevertheless, we commit ourselves to continuing the work of improving and modernizing our electoral processes, and we stand ready to work with the OAS and colleague member states as partners on this journey to fully realize our shared democratic values and ideals at home and across the hemisphere. Once again, thank you, Ambassador Antoine, Mr. President, your colleagues for their work, and it's my pleasure to be here and be able to respond to this report. Blessings.
Muchísimas gracias, Ministro Mitchell, por su intervención, por compartir con este Consejo Permanente sus comentarios y sus apreciaciones sobre el desarrollo y los resultados del proceso electoral en su país, y también por valorar positivamente lo actuado por la organización en ese contexto. Ofrezco ahora la palabra a las delegaciones que deseen referirse al informe presentado, por favor. No hay solicitudes de palabra. Agradezco nuevamente entonces la presencia del señor canciller y le deseamos todo lo mejor en su gestión. Desde esta presidencia sugiero que el Consejo Permanente tome nota del informe final de la misión de observación electoral desplegada en las Bahamas para las elecciones generales del dieciséis de septiembre de 2021, contenido en el documento ya mencionado, CP/DOC 55958/24. También corresponde agradecer profundamente al embajador Antoine y a los miembros de su equipo por el trabajo realizado durante la misión. Si no hay objeciones, queda acordado esta forma. Muchas gracias. Muy bien, podemos pasar al punto tres, si están de acuerdo, que se refiere a la elección de un miembro del Comité Jurídico Interamericano. Se trata de ocupar la vacante producida por el señor Stephen Larson, de acuerdo con la información puesta de presente por la Misión Permanente de los Estados Unidos el dieciséis de octubre del año pasado mediante una nota que fue distribuida como documento CP/INF 9973/23. De acuerdo con lo dispuesto en el artículo ciento uno de la Carta de la OEA y en los artículos siete y ocho del Estatuto del Comité Jurídico Interamericano, corresponde al Consejo Permanente cubrir las vacantes que se produzcan en el comité por causas distintas a la expiración normal de los mandatos. Para estos efectos, dentro del plazo estatutario previsto en la nota de la Secretaría General que fuera distribuida como documento CP/INF 9990/23, la Misión Permanente de los Estados Unidos presentó la candidatura de la profesora Inke Grossman para ocupar la vacante citada. En este sentido, y dado que contamos solamente con una candidatura, propongo que la profesora Grossman sea electa por aclamación como miembro del Comité Jurídico Interamericano para el periodo que iniciaría desde hoy y concluirá el treinta y uno de diciembre de este año 2024. Queda así acordado. Muchas gracias. Tiene la palabra la Delegación de los Estados Unidos, por favor.
Thank you, Chair. The United States is delighted at the election of Professor Grossman to the Inter-American Juridical Committee. It goes without saying that Professor Grossman will be an outstanding addition to the committee and is a well-known expert in the area of international law and human rights. Professor Grossman is currently a professor of law and co-director of the Center for International and Comparative Law at the University of Baltimore School of Law, and her strong background and commitment to political and human rights in the region will allow her to have an immediate impact on the committee. We join with other delegations to in welcoming Professor Grossman to the OAS and the Juridical Committee. We look forward to also nominating Professor Grossman to an additional four-year term on the committee at the OAS General Assembly in June. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Gracias a usted, embajador. Desconozco si la profesora Grossman está aquí en la sala, pero en todo caso le extendemos nuestras sinceras felicitaciones. Nuestras felicitaciones por su elección y auguramos una exitosa labor como miembro del Comité Jurídico Interamericano. Nos toca pasar al punto cuatro, por favor. Reconocimiento al difunto Dr. Patrick Lewis, representante permanente de Antigua y Barbuda ante la OEA en el periodo que se extendió de mil novecientos noventa y dos a mil novecientos noventa y cinco. A este efecto, me permito ofrecer la palabra a la Delegación de Antigua y Barbuda, que ha solicitado la inclusión de este punto en el orden del día para rendir el merecido homenaje a la memoria del Dr. Lewis. Por favor, embajador Sanders, tiene usted la palabra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, since I am speaking for the first time in the prominent council, after formally handing over the chairmanship to you, I repeat my congratulations and assure you, sir, of my full cooperation and solidarity as you preside over the work of this council. As I said at the formal handover, I am confident that the gavel is... As I said at the formal handover, I am confident that the gavel is in good and steady hands. I also want to thank you, sir, for agreeing to place this item on the agenda today, allowing us to reflect on the contribution of Dr. Patrick Lewis, a former ambassador and permanent representative of Antigua and Barbuda to this organization. Distinguished colleagues, Dr. Lewis passed away on January the fifth. He served in this council from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-five, a period marked by significant challenges across the Americas. During his tenure, he served as rapporteur for the Committee on the Problems of Small States, chairman of the Committee on Regulations and Procedures, and vice-chair of the Special Committee on Hemisphere Security. The issues confronting the OAS during those years were very similar to the concerns we grapple with today. Democracies were taking root amid the shadows of authoritarian rule. Internal conflicts and civil strife were testing the collective resolve of our hemisphere. In nineteen ninety-one, as Dr. Lewis entered the OAS, a coup in Haiti ousted President Jean Bertrand Aristide, triggering a crisis of human rights abuses by the military regime that overthrew him. That crisis was finally ameliorated through intervention by a U.S.-led mission called Operation Uphold Democracy. That story may sound familiar. Dr. Lewis contributed to the work of this organization to support international efforts for the restoration of democracy in Haiti, something which we continue to contemplate yet again today. He also contributed to other challenges facing this organization and our hemisphere during that period. Those challenges included Colombia, which was experiencing internal conflicts involving armed groups; Peru, which faced the shining path insurgency, violence and human rights abuses; and Guatemala, where efforts were being made to address the legacies of violence and human rights and human rights abuses after a prolonged civil war. Beyond his diplomatic roles, Dr. Lewis was an academic, graduating from Hampton University in nineteen sixty-six and earning a master's degree and a PhD in history from the University of Cincinnati. It was to Hampton University that he returned to end his professional life as a professor of history. His lifelong commitment to intellectual discourse paved the way for a fulfilling diplomatic career. When he left the OAS in nineteen ninety-five, he went on to become ambassador to the United Nations until two thousand and four. In those roles, he and I worked in separate global theaters, he at the UN and me in European capitals of the World Trade Organization. But we were united and advocating for the interests of Antigua and Barbuda and for our Caricom region, emphasizing economic inequalities, unfair trade terms, and the challenges faced by small states in international decision-making. He was proud of the path that he chose from a small country village on a Caribbean island to become an ambassador in the councils of the world's highest decision-making body, the United Nations. He served our country well. And today, in this council, to which he also made a valuable contribution, Antigua and Barbuda remembers him, thanks him, and honors him for his service, not only to our country but to this organization of American states. Thank you, sir.
Muchas gracias, embajador, por sus sentidas palabras en memoria del doctor Patrick Lewis y también sus generosas expresiones en lo que se refiere a esta presidencia. Consulta las delegaciones si hay alguna solicitud de palabra respecto de este punto. La Secretaría General, por favor, adelante. Ah, perdón, perdón, perdón. Está solicitando la palabra la Delegación de Estados Unidos. Adelante, por favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The United States would like to express its sincere condolences on the passing of Dr. Patrick Lewis, the late permanent representative of Antigua and Barbuda to the OAS. Dr. Lewis was not only a distinguished diplomat, a dedicated public servant and a scholar, but also one of the founding fathers of the Permanent Council's Committee on Hemisphere Security. He served as chairman of the Special Working Group on Hemisphere Security, leaving a lasting mark on the OAS. At the OAS, Dr. Lewis was often seen wearing a blue blazer, adorned with the Antigua and Barbuda crest on the left breast pocket, a symbol of his deep commitment to representing his nation with pride and honor on the international stage. Before his diplomatic career, Dr. Lewis was in academia, serving notably as professor of history here in the United States, the Hampton Institute in Virginia. His academic work, widely acclaimed, positioned him as a leading expert on Caribbean history and politics. In his own words during the fifty-eighth session of the United Nations General Assembly in two thousand and three, Dr. Lewis eloquently stated, and I quote, "The world is my country. All mankind are my brethren, and to do good is my religion." This encapsulates well his dedication to fostering global understanding and cooperation in his work in multiple areas or fields. Mr. Chairman, the decision to lower the flags to half-mast at the Antigua and Barbuda Embassy in the United States and the permanent missions to the United Nations in New York for the entire week is a fitting tribute to a man who not only represented his nation with distinction but also played a pivotal role in shaping the hemispheric security agenda. In recognizing Dr. Lewis's multifaceted contributions, we join the government and people of Antigua and Barbuda in mourning his loss. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Dr. Lewis's family, friends, and colleagues during this time. The United States remains committed to continuing the legacy of cooperation and partnership with Antigua and Barbuda that Dr. Patrick Lewis exemplified throughout his career. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por esa intervención. Tiene la palabra la representación de Honduras, por favor.
Gracias, señor presidente, y bienvenido. A nombre de los Estados de Belice, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Panamá, República Dominicana y el mío, Honduras, expreso nuestras sentidas condolencias por el fallecimiento del distinguido Dr. Patrick Lewis. El Dr. Lewis, aparte de excelente embajador, fue una figura destacada y respetada que sirvió con dedicación y distinción como embajador y representante permanente de Antigua y Barbuda ante esta organización desde mil novecientos noventa y dos hasta mil novecientos noventa y cinco. Su compromiso y servicio no conocían límites y su contribución trascendió a esferas diplomáticas al desempeñar el papel de representante permanente interino de nero a junio del dos mil cuatro, dejando una huella imborrable en el fortalecimiento de los lazos entre su nación y la comunidad de los Estados americanos. No podemos pasar por alto su significativa labor como embajador de Antigua y Barbuda ante las Naciones Unidas desde noviembre de mil novecientos noventa y cinco hasta junio de dos mil cuatro, así como su papel crucial como distinguido catedrático en la Universidad de Hampton, donde dejó una marca perdurable en las futuras generaciones. La pérdida del Dr. Lewis deja un vacío significativo en la comunidad diplomática y académica, recordándonos su compromiso inquebrantable con la promoción de los valores y principios que representan a su país de Antigua y Barbuda. Reitero nuestros pensamientos solidarios en estos duros momentos, especialmente para su familia, sus amistades y para Antigua y Barbuda en general. Muchas gracias.
Gracias a usted, embajador. Le paso la palabra a la Delegación de Perú, por favor.
Señor presidente, muchísimas gracias. Al hacer uso de la palabra por primera vez durante su presidencia, señor presidente, me permito felicitarlo y al mismo tiempo expresarle mis deseos de éxito durante la encomienda que le ha sido otorgada. Encima, colegas, buen día. Felicito y agradezco, señor presidente, la inclusión en el orden del día de este Consejo Permanente, el homenaje al distinguido hombre embajador ejemplar y académico destacado, el doctor Patrick Lewis, quien dejó un legado imborrable en el ejercicio de los altos puestos de representación de su país Antigua y Barbuda. Él además, su reciente fallecimiento nos deja un vacío profundo, pero su legado perdurará en la memoria de todos nosotros. El doctor Patrick Lewis fue un destacado académico en los Estados Unidos ocupando el cargo de profesor de historia en Hampton Institute en Virginia. Su amor por la historia y su dedicación a la educación también reflejaron, se reflejaron en su papel como editor en el Hampton Institute Journal of Economic Studies. Permítame, señor presidente, ponerme ahora el sombrero de presidente de la Comisión de Seguridad Hemisférica. La dedicación del doctor Lewis a la causa diplomática se distinguió aún más con su papel como vicepresidente del Comité Especial de la OEA sobre Seguridad Hemisférica desde mil novecientos noventa y dos. Además, él desempeñó funciones importantes como relator sobre los problemas de los pequeños Estados para el grupo de trabajo de la OEA sobre Seguridad Hemisférica y fue el presidente del Comité de Reglamentos y Procedimientos de la OEA durante el año noventa y uno y noventa y dos. Hoy, no solo recordamos al diplomático consumado y académico distinguido, sino también al ser humano excepcional que tocó las vías de muchos con su sabiduría, humildad, compromiso y servicio. Hacemos votos para que el legado del doctor Lewis inspire a todos los jóvenes de América para, siguiendo su ejemplo, poder estrechar aún más los lazos de fraternidad. Compartimos con Antigua y Barbuda y con los Estados del Caricom metas comunes respecto al desarrollo, medioambiente, cambio climático, la lucha contra la pobreza. La importancia de fortalecer estos lazos radica en la colaboración, en el entendimiento mutuo y en la construcción de un mundo más unido y residente. Sigamos pues ejemplo. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, embajador, por sus palabras en honor a la memoria y en reconocimiento a la figura del doctor Lewis. Tiene ahora la palabra la Delegación de Jamaica, por favor.
Thank you Chair. Your excellency Chair of the Permanent Council, Ambassador Nestor Méndez, Assistant Secretary General, distinguished ambassadors, alternate permanent representatives, ladies and gentlemen. The delegation of Jamaica joins in paying tribute to the late Dr. Patrick Lewis, who unfortunately passed away on the fifth of January, twenty twenty-four. Dr. Lewis was a dedicated and committed servant of Antigua and Barbuda and a true son of the Caribbean. Dr. Lewis served this country with distinction, commitment, and dedication as a diplomat in his capacity as ambassador of the United States, permanent representative to the organization of American states and permanent representative to the United Nations. His contribution as a diplomat has helped to shape and strengthen this organization in which he served based on his four pillars of democracy, human rights, multi-dimensional security, and integral development. And he has undoubtedly helped to deepen bilateral relations between Antigua and Barbuda and the United States. As the government and people of Antigua and Barbuda, Barbuda, and by extension the region, when the loss of a true servant, we can all be proud of his legacy, which will continue to positively impact a number of persons with whom he interacted. He will also be remembered as a champion of small island development states and as one of our finest historians of the region who impacted the lives of his former students, his colleagues, and many persons across the hemisphere, particularly when he served as professor of history at the Hampton Institute in Virginia. On behalf of the Jamaican delegation, let me express our deepest condolences to the people of Antigua, his family, and friends. May his soul rest in peace. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por sus palabras. Ofrezco la palabra a nuestro secretario general adjunto, el embajador Nestor Méndez, por favor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the General Secretariat of the OAS and Secretary General Almagro, I join the family of the late Dr. Patrick Lewis in mourning his loss. I also wish to convey to the government and people of Antigua and Barbuda sincere condolences on the passing of this native son and distinguished diplomat and public servant. Dr. Patrick Lewis presented his credentials as ambassador, permanent representative of Antigua and Barbuda to the OAS in June nineteen ninety-one, just prior to the twenty-first regular session of the General Assembly in Santiago, Chile. He also led his country's delegation to that assembly, which, we will recall, adopted the seminal resolution AG Res ten eighty on representative democracy. Ambassador Lewis thus assumed his tour of duty at a propitious moment when the OAS efforts in promoting and consolidating democracy were beginning to take root. The early nineteen nineties was a pivotal time for the organization. It was not long after his arrival when Dr. Lewis and his permanent council colleagues were confronted with challenges to democracy in the region. This included, as was said earlier, the September nineteen ninety-one military coup in Haiti that removed the country's democratically elected president, Jean Bertrand Aristide, who had assumed office some eight months earlier. Several months later, in April nineteen ninety-two, the autogolpe in Peru occurred. Ambassador Lewis, along with his fellow permanent representatives, was steadfast in his support of the OAS efforts and initiatives in the ensuing months in helping to reverse the trunquation to democracy that had occurred. These challenges to nascent democracies formed the basis of discussions in the Permanent Council on the need for follow-up mechanisms to strengthen democracy in the hemisphere. Ambassador Lewis was an active participant in these deliberations, which subsequently led to the reform of the OAS Charter, codified in the Protocol of Washington and which approved on December the fourteenth nineteen ninety-two at the sixteenth special session of the General Assembly and by the Protocol of Managua adopted in June the tenth nineteen ninety-three at the nineteenth special session of the General Assembly. He also led his country's delegation to these sessions of the General Assembly. Ambassador Lewis was active in other debates at the OAS during his tour of duty. He contributed significantly to the discussions which led to the creation of the Committee on Hemisphere Security as one of the permanent committees of the Permanent Council. This followed a presentation he had made on the security problems of small island states in which he highlighted the unique challenges which the states faced and the need for the OAS to be proactive in addressing them. To this day, this topic remains on the agenda of the Committee on Hemisphere Security as one of continuing concern for member states, particularly those of the Caribbean. His leadership on this issue will always be remembered. As an academic whose scholarship centered on issues relating to Afro-descendants and Black studies, Ambassador Lewis played a role in helping to change the focus of the Permanent Council commemoration of Columbus Day, now described as "the encounter of two worlds". Once again, it was one of his presentations which highlighted the history of colonialism in the Americas and the suffering inflicted on native peoples and by chattel slavery that riveted the attention of members of this council. It was not long after that that the Permanent Council decided on a different orientation for this day. As previously indicated, the early to mid nineteen nineties was a momentous time for the OAS. Former Ambassador Lewis during this period would have interacted with two different secretaries general, the late and well-esteemed Baena Suárez and former President Cesar Gaviria, and would therefore have provided much-needed support in helping to modernize the organization. Ambassador Lewis, a committed regionalist, was no doubt part of these changes as a contributor to the discussions in the councils of the OAS as a contributor to the discussions in the councils of the OS, as well as a witness to the changes which have led to the modern OS that we now have. We therefore pay homage to Ambassador Lewis for his service to the OS as a former permanent representative. To this end, I wish to convey once again our most sincere condolences to his family and to the government and people of Antigua and Barbuda on his passing. He was a true statesman. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Muchas gracias, señor secretario general adjunto. Estamos en condiciones de pasar al punto cinco de nuestro orden del día. Perdón. Le paso la palabra al embajador Sandas. Disculpe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I take the floor only to express my sincere thanks to the delegations that spoke here today in tribute to Doctor Patrick Lewis, and I wish to assure you and this council that the remarks made here will be conveyed to the government and people of Antigua and Barbuda to memorial service to be held in Antigua in the coming days in his honor and also to his family. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias, embajador. Creo que un hombre de la talla del doctor Lewis que hizo tanto por nuestro hemisferio y por el multilateralismo lo merece ampliamente. Ahora sí, les propongo pasar al punto cinco de nuestro orden del día. Este punto trata de la instalación de la Comisión de Asuntos Administrativos y Presupuestarios y elección de la presidencia. Les consulto si podemos proceder con la instalación de la Comisión de Asuntos Administrativos y Presupuestarios de acuerdo con lo dispuesto en el artículo 28 del reglamento. Si no hay objeciones, queda instalada entonces la Comisión de Asuntos Administrativos y Presupuestarios. Queda acordado. En cuanto refiere a la elección de la presidencia de la comisión, invito a las delegaciones a que continúen avanzando en sus consultas con miras a incluir dicha elección en el orden del día de la próxima sesión que tenemos agendada para este Consejo Permanente el miércoles 31 de enero. Hasta en tanto y en base a lo establecido en el literal D del artículo 29 del reglamento, el actual presidente de la Comisión de Asuntos Administrativos y Presupuestarios, el embajador Neymar y los vicepresidentes que corresponden seguirán ejerciendo sus funciones hasta que concluya con éxito la elección de las nuevas autoridades de la comisión. Si comparten este criterio, no habiendo objeciones, queda así acordado. Muchísimas gracias. Podemos pasar al punto seis del orden del día, que trata acerca de la consideración de dos proyectos de resolución. El primero titulado "Lugar y fecha de la quinta reunión del Grupo de Trabajo sobre Cooperación y medidas de fomento de la confianza en el ciberespacio", presentado por la delegación de Chile y que consta en el documento CP/Doc 5954/24. El segundo se titula "Lugar y fecha del 54º periodo ordinario de sesiones de la Asamblea General", que fuera presentado por la Misión Permanente de Paraguay y que consta en el documento CP/Doc 5957/24. Consulto a las delegaciones si podemos proceder con la aprobación de ambos proyectos de resolución. Si hay algún comentario. No siendo el caso, quedan aprobados ambos proyectos. Muchas gracias. Expresamos nuestro agradecimiento a la delegación de Paraguay por acoger al máximo órgano a nuestra organización en junio próximo y le pasamos la palabra.
Gracias, señor presidente. En nombre de la delegación del Paraguay, agradezco el apoyo de cada uno de los estados miembros para la adopción de la reciente resolución que determina que el 54º periodo ordinario de sesiones de la Asamblea General se celebrarán asunción del 26 al 28 de junio próximo ante el retiro del ofrecimiento de Suriname. La República del Paraguay albergará estas sesiones por tercera vez en su historia, habiendo sido la primera en 1990 tras el advenimiento de la democracia en el país y la segunda hace exactamente diez años en 2014. El gobierno paraguayo asume este desafío como una demostración de su tradicional política exterior de apoyo al multilateralismo y su compromiso con esta organización, en el convencimiento de que la misma se erige en un espacio necesario para abordar y dar respuesta a los diferentes desafíos que compartimos en el continente. Esperamos contar con el apoyo de todas las delegaciones para los trabajos preparatorios de manera a asegurar el éxito de esta próxima asamblea y recibirlos próximamente con la hospitalidad que caracteriza al pueblo paraguayo. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias a usted. En lo que refiere al punto siete, otros asuntos. Me permito ofrecer la palabra a la Misión Observadora Permanente de Francia para que nos comparta el mensaje del embajador Jean-Marie Bruno, quien hoy se despide del Consejo Permanente como observador de Francia ante la organización. Adelante, por favor.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Et comme vous l'avez dit, je vais vous lire un message de l'ambassadeur Jean-Marie Bruno, observateur permanent auprès de l'OEA. Monsieur le Président du Conseil permanent, mesdames et messieurs, les représentants permanents, mesdames et messieurs, les observateurs permanents, Monsieur le Secrétaire général, Monsieur le Secrétaire général adjoint, mesdames et messieurs, les cadres et agents de l'OEA. Permettez-moi tout d'abord, en ce début d'année, de vous présenter tous mes vœux de réussite et de bonheur personnels dans un contexte international que nous espérons tous plus sereins. Lorsque la détérioration de mon état de santé et le coût devenu exorbitant des traitements médicaux aux États Unidos, mon contrainte à quitter prématurément Washington en juillet dernier, j'espérais avoir le plaisir de vous retrouver à plus ou moins brève échéance et de pouvoir reprendre mes fonctions. Les affections dont je suis atteint n'ont décidé autrement et ma mission à Washington s'achèvera donc officiellement le 21 janvier prochain. Avant de disparaître définitivement du paysage américain, je souhaitais par ce bref message vous adresser mes plus sincères remerciements pour votre accueil, vos conseils et votre disponibilité. Ces remerciements s'adressent tout particulièrement à mes chers collègues observateurs permanents avec lesquels il aura été particulièrement plaisant et enrichissant de travailler et d'échanger en confiance. Mon départ anticipé n'est qu'une anecdote dans la riche histoire de la France et de l'OEA. Remarquablement incarnée aujourd'hui par mon collègue Antoine Michon, elle se poursuivra, j'en suis certain, et sera trouver les moyens de moderniser et d'amplifier sa coopération avec l'organisation. Les principes qui la fondent demeurent en effet pleinement partagés. Qu'il s'agisse de démocratie représentative, d'état de droit, de droit de l'homme, d'égalité femme-homme ou de lutte contre le changement climatique, notamment faisant de l'OEA un de nos partenaires de confiance dans le monde. Les crises actuelles montrent à cet égard l'importance d'un socle de valeurs partagées pour être en capacité de faire face au défi que nos pays et nos populations doivent quotidiennement relever. En vous renouvelant mes remerciements, je vous souhaite à toutes et à tous le meilleur dans la suite de vos missions et de vos carrières professionnelles. S'il est peu probable que nous ayons la chance un jour de nous croiser de nouveau, sachez que vous êtes désormais une part de mon histoire et de mon affection. Je vous remercie de votre attention. Un message. Merci.
Muchas gracias. Con los deseos de pronta recuperación, la salud del embajador Bruno. Agradecemos su intervención en su nombre. Tengo un pedido de palabra de la delegación de Chile, pero antes de eso quiero aprovechar la ocasión que se presenta con la lectura de las palabras de despedida del embajador Bruno para llevar a consideración de ustedes una propuesta que implica un cambio en las costumbres y los usos de este Consejo Permanente que refiere a la cuestión de las formas y el fondo, la sustancia de los temas que nos corresponde tratar en esta sala. Lo que les quiero proponer es que de ahora en más, cuando se trate de dar la bienvenida o de despedir alguno de los representantes permanentes, lo hagamos fuera de esta sala. Esto significa no utilizando los recursos de la sala, que implican personal de apoyo de la secretaría, la asistencia de los intérpretes que están en las cuatro cabinas que nos acompañan y toda la movilización de recursos y de tiempo que eso implica. Creo que las muy merecidas bienvenidas y despedidas se pueden realizar en la galería de los bustos, en la galería de los ser héroes del primer piso, sin perjuicio de los trabajos de sustancia del Consejo y que eso va a ir en una modernización y un mejor uso del tiempo por parte de todos nosotros. En mi caso personal, ya me doy por más que bienvenido con las expresiones muy generosas y muy cálidas de todos ustedes y cuando llegue la oportunidad de partir tampoco voy a querer incluir el punto en el orden del día del Consejo, sino que se realizará algún encuentro en otro formato, por ejemplo, el que sugerí en la galería de los héroes. Así que comparto esta inquietud con ustedes. Entiendo que es un cambio en las costumbres que vienen de muchísimos años la organización, pero creo que van a, apuntan hacia un mejor uso del tiempo y los recursos y en nada significan un desmedro a la importancia de darnos la bienvenida y la despedida entre colegas cuando va ocurriendo eso como una rotación normal propia de la actividad diplomática. Les dejo entonces esa propuesta a consideración. Y le paso la palabra a la delegación de Chile. Gracias.
Gracias, presidente. Distinguidos colegas, el 16 de marzo del año pasado tuvimos el retiro de representantes permanentes, donde parte de la conversación que tuvimos fue sistematizada en lo que el equipo facilitador llamó low-hanging fruits, por lo que en español sería algo así como frutos de fácil cosecha. En tal sentido, una de las conclusiones tuvo que ver con mejorar el acceso a la información y la gestión de redes sociales, lo que guardaba especial relación con hacer más fluida, constante y útil la información que reciben nuestros estados desde la secretaría, especialmente desde los departamentos. Esa orientación fue personalizada en su momento también como mejora del sitio web y fue parte de la conversión que tuvimos una semana después en la misión de Tinito Vago el 23 de marzo, donde nuestra delegación Chile se propuso voluntariamente para dar seguimiento a esta tarea. En tal propósito, nos hemos reunido algunas veces ya con la dirección de prensa y comunicaciones de la secretaría general, tanto para conocer los trabajos de mejora del sitio web como para analizar herramientas que permitan mejorar la comunicación que reciben nuestros estados de lo que hacen los departamentos. Como resultado de esas conversaciones, el 11 de enero pasado, la semana pasada, fue circulada en inglés y español una nota de la delegación de Chile donde solicita a cada una de las delegaciones su parecer sobre una propuesta de boletines periódicos que siendo configurados a partir de necesidades de cada usuario de nuestras misiones pueda contribuir a recibir información oportuna, útil de cada departamento que la persona lo requiera. Entonces les agradecemos revisar esa nota y que puedan responder en los términos que allí se indican al correo electrónico respecto de esa propuesta. Muchas gracias, presidente.
Muchas gracias, señor embajador, por el recordatorio y la necesidad de que todos demos respuesta oportuna a lo planteado en dicha nota. Antes de levantar la sesión, me corresponde hacer un par de anuncios. El primero, el pasado martes 9 de enero, la secretaria distribuyó el documento CP Doc 5955/24 con la nota del Departamento de Derecho Internacional que transmite la resolución e informe sobre el tema la autonomía de la voluntad en los contratos comerciales internacionales con una parte negocialmente débil. Adoptado por el consejo, perdón, el Comité Jurídico Interamericano durante su cuarto periodo extraordinario de sesiones. De conformidad con el artículo 17 del reglamento, dichos documentos se transmiten a la Comisión de Asuntos Jurídicos y Políticos para la consideración de los estados miembros. El segundo anuncio se refiere a la Comisión de Estilo del 53º periodo ordinario de sesiones que se va a reunir de manera presencial en el Salón Guerrero el viernes 19 y el lunes 22, o sea, el viernes de esta semana y el lunes de la semana próxima, de las 10 de la mañana a las 5:30 de la tarde, y las reuniones son abiertas a la participación de todas las delegaciones. La secretaria ya distribuyó la convocatoria correspondiente y facilitó los textos de las declaraciones y resoluciones revisados que se encuentran disponibles en el documento CP/Inf 10083/24. No habiendo más solicitudes de palabra y agradeciéndoles a todos su presencia, su participación, se levanta la sesión y los saludo atentamente.